Call the Wednesday, February 24th, 2021 Zoom teleconference meeting into order. I'd like to call a roll call first. Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Stady.
President.
Hey, Dick.
Chairman Shay is present. Um, this meeting has been called and being held under executive order on remote participation on Thursday, March 12th. Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 38, Section 20, the auto was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state agency is state emergency is terminated. First today, and the reason we're starting an hour early is we have scheduled an executive session. So if I have a motion and it passes, we're going to go immediately into executive session, then come back. Uh, for our, we're going to go right and then go right into our regular meeting. Should it take less than an hour?
I'll make a motion. We go in executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, chapters 30A, Section 21, subsection A, subsection 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of a county employee or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against such employee.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion going to executive session, Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Stady.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. We are in executive session, executive session. There'll be a one minute call here and then we'll get everyone in that wants to come in and we'll uh go right to the agenda. We believe we're going to be on item number four.
Okay.
And Director Mullen, what, where did you put that resignation on, on the agenda when you added it this morning?
Uh, yes, it's under number seven. It's.
Okay, that's where it should be. I didn't, okay, okay. I'm looking at the old one. That's why I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. So many agendas. Okay.
So like, and we are back and we are recording at this point, Commissioner. So, so when we invited the.
Wait 30 seconds and I'm going to launch in so that everyone can get on.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your indulgence, everyone. We are at our regularly scheduled meeting that started today at 12 noon. We had a brief executive session and now we're going to go right back to our agenda. Item number four, it's 12:50. Item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of February 17th.
I don't have, I don't have any amendments. How about you, Dick?
I'm fine. I'd move approval of the meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor of approving the open session meeting minutes of February 17th?
Aye.
It's your name.
Aye.
Number five, public comment. Director Mullen, do we have any public comment today?
Uh, no, we don't. I haven't heard from anybody, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number six, old business, proposed reinstatement of contract 3-10-2506 dated October 23rd, 2019 between the County of Norfolk and A and S Corporation. I'm going to ask Director Mullen for a one minute explanation of this and why it's back on the agenda. And then if, if we can vote it today, I'd like to go forward. I'm not sure. Um, you know, we, we have two members that were present at that meeting. That's fine. Good. Director Mullen.
Oh, yes. Like, and Chairman, like, if we can wait just one moment, like, for Nancy Wackrout to join us as well as she's logging on as we speak.
Okay, we can go beyond number six, old business. We're going to come right back to it.
Right.
I'd like to go to number seven, personnel matters. We have three. First one of his is a contingent employment for a longtime employee uh to come back for four months in the registry of deeds. I need a motion. And then there's the second one, also with the registry deeds, and a third one about a resignation letter.
I'd move a notice of contingent employment for Gary Lubin of Boynton Beach, Florida as temp employee at the rate as stated effective for 2021 through 9/30/21.
All in favor of notice and contingent employment for Gary Lubin?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number two. Notice of the deceased, of deceased employee Robert Radek of Waymouth, effective 2/12/21. I did put this on the record last week because I happened to open the globe and see it. We did uh have a moment of silence in Robert's family's behalf and we adjourned the meeting in memory of Robert. So this, does this require a vote or is it, we're just putting on some notice?
So it's a notice, Mr. Chairman, as I understand it.
All right. That's, that's a sad notice. Number three, added today uh in a proper manner, we have a resignation letter from Joseph McNichols of Westwood. I need a motion to accept or reject and for the record, it's dated February 21st and it's addressed to Mike Mullen.
The February, February 20th, you said 21st, it was a 24th.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 24.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second to accept the resignation?
Yes, I would, I'd second the motion uh to accept the resignation of Mr. McNichols on his letter to us dated February 24, 2021, effective immediately.
Motion's made and properly, properly made and seconded to accept the resignation of Joseph M. McNichols of Westwood, Mass as county surveyor. All in favor?
Aye.
Effective immediately. Thank you. That concludes personnel. Number eight, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
I'm sorry, Joe. You said you're going to go back to number six. Is it time for number six yet?
I'm waiting for Nancy and I don't see her on the, oh, I do.
She's on now.
All right, I do. Good point. Back to number six. Old business, proposed reinstatement of contract 3-10-2506 dated October 23rd, 2019 between the County of Norfolk and A and S Corporation. Nancy, we're going to have you give us a one minute explanation of this, maybe.
Okay, hi, Commissioners. I believe the contractor is just connecting in. We had a claim and against the bond, with the bonding company to recoup the monies because the job was not completed at the school. Um, I had I had contacted the bonding company and the representative reached out to Mr. Cannon who afterwards reached out to me asking what he could do to resolve the issue. Um, I contacted the representative again and if it is so voted to let him complete the contract, it will not negate the bond if he did fail to complete. But he, I do have him on the Zoom if you'd like to speak to him. His name is Austin Cannon.
Austin, do you want to explain this to us?
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Um, so um, I'm not, I'm not trying to make any, uh, excuse me, sorry, uh, big excuses here. I was just, I was a young company and um I wasn't able to get the resources to uh finish the job. Um, I'm in a better spot now and um we probably have, you know, 15 to 20 uh truckloads to get that um concrete out of there and I'm in a position to be able to do that now. Um, but um I just was uh not in a position to finish it off and I do apologize for that.
Commissioners, any questions of Austin Cannon from A and S Corporation Norfolk, Mass?
You said you could do it, uh, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes.
Um, I think you said you could get it done in two weeks. Is that correct, sir?
That's, that's correct. If you gave me a notice to proceed, I need about a week to line everything up. Uh, I would hope to get it done in less than two weeks, but I, I think that would be enough time.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, and I, we all have a letter in our packet from
Yep.
From Austin.
Yep.
On his letterhead saying that he will complete it in two weeks.
Yeah.
You realize, Austin, if you don't, and we're, you know, we're, we're put on a vine with our insurance company, we will go to the next level. But we want you to complete it. We really do. We want to finish it.
I, I know you do, but I understand the consequences.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, I'll move um uh the reinstatement of contract uh uh number 3-10-2506 dated 10/23/19 between County of Norfolk and A and S Corporation.
I'll second the motion and Austin, um, I'm, I'm glad you're back and I'm glad you're going to help us out. So thank you.
Uh, I, I do appreciate the uh, the opportunity, the second opportunity uh to, to get it done, boy.
Good. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman Shay?
Yes.
Could I just ask, um, normally the notice to proceed is signed by the Board of Commissioners. To expedite this process, could I ask that um Mike Mullen, the county director, sign as your representative for this so we could get it, I, we could get it out tomorrow to him?
Can't use our stamp or no?
Uh, it would, it would be, um, you could authorize it that way or you could authorize Michael to sign as the county director to do this.
Sounds good to me, either one, whatever's easiest. I, I, if Austin's ready, we're ready. Let's go.
Okay, thank you.
If you, if you want me to drive to Denham tomorrow to do it, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm in my last day of having to stay home. I could do it.
Well, we're always very happy to see you, but stay home for that last day.
All right. All right, good luck. We gotta take a vote now. We didn't vote it. Can we vote?
Was made and seconded.
Right. We need to vote.
And to have Director Mullen sign.
Yes.
Terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the next item is number nine.
All right.
It's a subject matter for the Norfolk.
Is Austin want to say something more? He's waving.
I just want to make sure you're all set with me. I can go.
Yeah.
Good luck, Austin.
All right, I don't.
Thank you, Austin.
All right, thank you.
All right. Good luck, man.
The stairs chance, the chair stands corrected. Number eight, payroll and expense warrant.
Right. I'm going to do, I'll go. Okay, here we go. Motion, uh, the following, county weekly payroll, 21-28 in the amount of $142,864.82. So moved.
We have a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, first part, next one.
Uh, next motion to approve the AGI bi-weekly payroll, 21-34 in the amount of $332,228.43. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the second one. Number three.
Third motion, Mr. Chairman, county expense warrant, uh, February 4th, 21 in the amount of $479,658.29. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the third one. Number four.
Last one, uh, Mr. Chairman, AGI expense warrant, uh, 21-08A in the amount of $52,520.4. So moved.
Second.
On the number four, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You won't.
Number nine, Norfolk County Superior Court Dome Repair Project, discussion of colors, votes may be taken. Seeing this on the agenda, which I knew it was, and I looked at my colors here, what, did, did I forget? Did we forget to address John early in the meeting about his regularly weekly update or is this going to include it?
So we did, uh, hold on, um, I think the agenda actually took John out, but I think John is here. Oh, I think in the matter of time, like, we're trying to do a lot in today's meeting. Uh, you know, we didn't have it, but I mean, John has been involved and he all the commissioners, I don't think you knew when you were elected to the office of county commissioner. Oh, you know, you were all selected to become, you know, a paint selection uh experts and John McGowan has as well. So, and I know John does have an opinion on it, but uh, but Nancy, if you want to give an overview on this and where we are.
Hi, yes, um, okay, we're, we're in the, this is going to be going out for um advertisement for next Wednesday and we were asking the color of the cost of the gold, like, that's on the dome right now, and there's a $45 per gallon increase in price, which is doable. But on top of that is the cost of labor to apply a clear polycoating over the gold because that's required for UV protection against the fading. I would suggest an alternate for this color which would define the additional cost of this, if that's what we chose to do at the end. And plus, it would also, we would also know that the contractor owns whatever color is chosen by the board. And we, Mike, you have the.
Well, before I go to the Commissioners, I'd like to hear from John. If you're, if you're done, Nancy, that's fine.
No, I am.
Don't leave us though.
I'm not leaving.
Okay. John.
Yes. This is uh something that you shouldn't rush into to begin with. I painted that dome years ago and uh it is, and it is a labor intensive, but this is something that you should have a markup made of. I mean, I mean, it's good to say, uh, yeah, I want it gold, but we have to know what they're putting on the surface of the dome. I know they're putting, I, I didn't look into it that good, but I know they're putting a mesh fiber and then they're covering it with some kind of uh filler and, and I'm sure you have to prime that or seal that somehow. And you want to see how the paint, the color that you pick out once, that you want to see how it's going to adhere to that fabric on. But it's, whatever they put in it, I don't know. I haven't looked at it. I think it's some kind of acrylic or something. But if you go with a, a gold color, there's, I, I know I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. There's all kinds of gold. There's different gold colors of gold. And you can't pick it off a chart and then look up at that dome and, and you're going to see a totally different picture. But it's not going to be what you picked out. You want to see a, a markup made with that paint that you pick, that you do pick out. And what I'd go with uh myself is uh either a patina that, like a faded copper, that's with that greenish color. Uh, and it, it, go online and look at other uh, uh, you know, other buildings that have it already. But it's not something you just vote on today and, and the architect could help you out with that, but no matter what way you go, I would get a markup made with the paint that you pick out so you can, I don't mean like a little two by two, I mean like a four by four sheet of, of metal because I, I know they're covering the metal, but I don't know what they're covering it with, so. It's not something that uh that you should be jumping into today voting on. I, that's my own opinion, but as always, it's up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
I have a question through you, if you don't mind.
Oh. If I can answer.
Sure. Hey, John. So the last time we, we did this, I don't think we went for the, the actual gold paint. We went for a, a paint that was kind of colored gold. Then it turned green. Um, so uh, they gave us something called RD Mono Guard Rich Gold Number 52. I thought it looked pretty good, but I don't, I think that's just a paint. So, um, uh, so I, I agree with you in your idea of a markup. I think it's fine, but I, can we fix it so that it won't turn green? I, I thought it looked nicer when it was gold.
Commissioner Collins, could I um step in for a second?
Go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, the, we're, we're basically choosing between a basic color or a metallic, which is a metallic is what you have in your hand that you just showed.
Right.
This is like a, this is a total coating where the color is incorporated into the coating that will go over the whole area. So I, um, but the only difference is this extra polycoat would be for the metallic to cause, you know, not to have, to have UV fading. I can have the architect in the meeting next week if you'd like to speak to her about it before making the color decision.
Well, like John said, we might need a markup.
Yeah, can we get a markup?
Yes, I, let me inquire to see if that can be done.
Oh, it can be done. It's, I mean, we.
This is, this is a totally different product than just a paint. Um, it's.
Well, that's all the reason you'd want to see it, to see what it looks like. And uh, and it's not something you have to rush into right now anyway. You definitely need a markup because you, you want to see what you're, what you're paying for it because once it goes up there, uh, you have to live with it. So it's, it's basically uh something you should do. See, even if you paint your room in your house, you have a, you take a wall and you cover it with a color. But this is a lot more expensive than a room in your house.
So Commissioners, if I could, I think actually having the architect and really to explain the product and to explain the process in next week would be best. Nancy has been working very closely with her. Oh, and I think one of the things we are trying to do like is get this out to bid, you know, relatively shortly so we can meet the summer construction schedule.
Um, just, and, and Mike knows this, we all know Mike's last day is next Wednesday and um from uh, but well, next week I'm unavailable. Next week I'm not in. So um, I, I'm fine with you guys talking to the architect and, and making a decision without me. That's fine.
Are you okay with, uh, I was leaning towards the gold. I like the gold look. Is it possible to get a markup of gold? Can we ask that? Just to see how that compares to the green?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. That's, I, I was leaning that way. I mean, I looked at the pictures. You gave us pictures in the packet of some of the buildings with the green and honestly, I don't know, I, I thought the gold might look a little better, but.
Yeah, that, that, when it was painted gold before, it looked fabulous and then it turned green.
I see. Okay, well, maybe.
I can also see if there's an option between a gold color that's favorable besides the metallic color that you have right now.
Okay.
But we're still, I have three questions. We're still going to have John try to do a markup of both colors, right?
I'm going to request that from the architect, yes.
Okay. And, and anytime you wanted to have her in, if it's next week, that's fine with me. Number, John, when did you last paint this?
Oh, that'll be 12 years ago, maybe.
Okay.
I rented equipment and painted it, but like I was saying, the paint that I bought was metal to metal. That, this is why I, I question what material the paint's going on. You have to, you're going to get a paint expert. They should know anyway. The architect should know, but the paint I put up there was metal to metal. I had to do that because that's what was up there. Uh, but they're, they're going to cover this with some kind of a membrane and then they're going to fill it in with something and then you're going to paint over that or, or is the paint mixed in with it? Or I don't, I don't really know, Commissioner.
Okay. Another question. I'm looking at a drawing, a, a picture. It's not a new picture, but it's not ancient. 1910, I'm told, historic postcard.
Right.
Of Norfolk County showing Patina Dome. The dome is what we're talking about. You see the rest of the roof to the left and right of the dome? Are we going to paint that too? I think it's in your packet, Commissioner.
I see it. Yeah.
Are we going to paint the, the whole thing or just the dome? With this contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chairman Shay, I don't actually have that packet. That isn't like the color scheme packet. Would you be able to share that on your screen at all?
Oh, boy, now you're really, wait a minute. I gotta get my technician.
Yeah, you'd have to scan it, Joe.
I, I'm, I can't.
Yeah.
Hold it up like this, Joe.
I'm going to, I'm going to have my technician send this to you, Mike, and you can put it on the screen. I got another question.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, John? Everything, or is this just a dome or is it the whole roof?
Yeah.
I think it's just a dome.
Just a dome. I think it's.
Dome and below the dome.
But not the roof, though. The roof.
Okay. So if we switch to gold.
But you're not painting underneath. You only painting the dome, gold.
Just the dome, right.
So the dome will be gold and the underneath will be green, right?
No, it's not green. Yeah, it's uh like a beige. Looks like, it's like a county beige, but it's.
Okay, I'll take a walk, I'll look at it. And the last question is, I agree with Commissioner Stady. I know these are financially troubled times. Mike, we just texted it to you. But I, I think the gold, the gold is so much better and
Yeah.
If it was good enough for uh Griddley Bryant uh in 1825, John Gillis's cousin, we, we should stick with the gold. But I know I don't want to be frivolous with the money.
No, I, I painted it gold and it looked like, uh, Commissioner Collins said, it really looked nice. But you got to understand, that takes a pretty good beating up there with the weather and storms and stuff, but uh hopefully this, this holds up. You know, quite a much.
It looked terrific. It, it made the cover of the phone book.
Wow, right.
Um, have we consulted with Clerk Timothy about this?
Uh, not to mind.
Has he weighed in? Do you know, John or, or Mike?
Well, here, the gold the last time, uh, I mean, that, that's you know, that, that's the best way to go with the gold.
Yeah.
It's, it's a comment.
We're going to, we're going to have the architect in next week?
Yes, and we did check in with the clerk of our courts also, and I believe his preference is the gold.
Okay. That's good to know. I, I, I kind of agree with him, but you know, we'll listen to the architect and can we instruct Mr. McGowan to go forward on, on some markups here, paint a border too to show us or what the weightily architect talks to us.
So, yeah, basically because of the specialized product that we're using or we're proposing to use to really cover the dome, as Nancy mentioned, it's not just a paint, it's an acrylic mesh. I like, and what I recommend is if Nancy can reach out to the architect, uh, who can reach out to the paint specialist on the project and see if he could be available to do these same things.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh.
You know what you should have done? You should have a cutout made by the architect or who, I mean, you're putting yourself a bid, right? You don't, you don't know who's going to get the job, right?
No.
So, no, but that would be the importance of the bidders conference as well when they are dead here as well.
Right, that, correct. That's the way I'd do it. I, that way there, you, you'll have a sample of what you're putting up on that dome. Because you're covering the, the metal dome, right, with uh some kind of a system. And uh, another thing I don't know about, I'm sure the architect looked into the weight to see if uh any extra weight, how much weight that would add to the dome. I hope it, not too much would cause any structural uh problems with it, but I'm sure they looked into all of that.
So, yeah, and all that information was presented to the county and the commissioners at the meeting in November as well.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, um, can we move the ball along? I, and, and, and wait, wait for, try to get the architect to come to next week's meeting if possible, if not, the week after.
Yes.
That's my suggestion. Commissioners, last call on, on the, on the gold. Okay.
Yeah.
I think it, I think, I can't stress enough, and I know I'm a, a a little, I'm a little bit of a history guy. I can't stress enough what the downtown Denham looks like and it, we, I know it's expensive, I know, but to preserve these buildings is, 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 is as important as many, 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 many other things we do, but it, it's really near the top of my list. I know it's the one, never going to be replicated, never going to go away hopefully. And lost money. Okay. All right, having said all that.
Could I just ask one question?
Absolutely.
Joe, could we have John McGowan or whoever's the appropriate person, uh, maybe give us just even a, like a crib note outline of what's the cost of the different colors and perhaps even expected life expectancy? Is that possible? Just to help us a little bit. So if the gold, we know the gold's more expensive, we know that. But if, if it's terms of resiliency and, and terms of being available, this would help us a little bit next week. Next week, not now, but we have something to think about.
Oh, hi, this is Larry. This is Larry.
Larry?
Yes, with RD Coatings.
Oh. This is Larry from RD Coatings.
It worked.
Yes. Larry, what, we're going to, we're going to go back to the dome. Go ahead, Larry, since you're here. Thank you.
Okay. So anyways, I'm, I'm the representative of RD Coatings.
Okay.
And uh, I don't know if you have some questions for me or, or what's, uh, what I can do for you.
I, if you heard the whole presentation, we're probably going to get to you next week after we talk to the architect, but if you've traveled or got on our, our, I, if you heard the whole presentation, we're probably gonna get to you next week after we talk to the architect, but if you've traveled or got on our our. Our Zoom today, I suppose we can uh.
Well, I just, I just entered, I did, you know, I just got a call from Nancy and she asked if I could jump in, so I I don't know what was said, sorry.
Yeah, it's kinda, we're, we we tossed it back and forth, we're gonna hear from the architect next week, but we're not gonna let it lay, we're we're, we wanna meet the summer schedule, I can promise you that.
Okay.
And uh. You know. We realize that labor cost here is 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 a lot, but you know, the paint, the paint isn't cheap either, but we we we're really very proud of that building and. It's one of my babies, it's not our baby.
I understand.
So Nancy will get back to you after today and tell you which way we're 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 going, but we're going forward, I'll tell you that, Larry.
Okay, that's good to know, and if you need me to participate, you know, in your meeting next week or show up, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, Nancy will call you and ask, to tell you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you're all set with me, very good.
Yes, thank you, unless you want to listen to the budget.
Uh, no, thanks, that's, I'm okay with that.
All right.
Hey, did you get the color sample, did Nancy get the color samples we sent?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know how, did you look at those, are they, are they are interesting? Yep.
We did, and there's a lot of discussion between gold and not gold, but we'll. We're in the, we're in the early stages here, but we're gonna push right along.
Okay, terrific, have a great day, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Number ten, joint budget review meeting with finance committee, beginning approximately at one fifteen. Boy, am I, oh, it's only one eighteen, having said all that, I'm gonna, I admitted, the, of course, the department, I see the department heads. That it is their budget, I see Joe Redden, I see Carl Baldoff from the. Budget Committee, who else do we have?
So from the budget, from the FinCom, Mr. Chairman. We don't actually have a quorum yet, I don't believe we have Mr. Redden and Mr. Baldiff. So and then for our departments, we do have Register O'Donnell, we have Treasurer Bellotti, so we have John McGowan, so we have the three departments and elected officials here who.
Okay, well, I'm I'm looking at my screen and I can, well, I I s- I see the placeholder for Joe Redden and I see that Kyle Baldoff. Is up there, but his picture, I mean, he's not there, we need one more anyway, I'd hate, I don't want to get started until we're all here and then go right at it, and I see, I see Treasurer Bellotti. Register O'Donnell and John, John, you're still there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have, Commissioners, do we have any pre discussion questions about how we're gonna go forward? This is an exciting time of the year. And this is. Stage two, actually, everyone has submitted their budgets, these are the raw budgets as we've received them, and today we're gonna hear from the three. Departments that I mentioned, I don't know whether we want to do them in ascending order or de, get rid of the less. A good go by size or whatever, but we can do it any way you want. I'm open to any suggestions, we're gonna ask the department heads to open up and explain their budget, which I think is pretty traditional, and then if you have any questions, it can be asked, and generally, we take. Whatever's said today under advisement to be part of the whole package for other meetings that we're gonna be having throughout the budget calendar. I believe that Director Mullin has notified us all about the budget calendar right through to the end, the dates. Last year was a banner year, as you know, hopefully, we can keep to the dates that have been sent out. And uh. Make it a little more streamlined, but whatever it is, it is, there's nothing more important than this budget.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It's Joe.
Mr. Redd.
The intent of the, of our participation was to be able to hear the budget presentations at the same time as the commissioners, so that we could deliver right down the road. The posting of the meeting was because we would have a quorum. Or an anticipated quorum, I know Mr. Connors will be getting on a little bit, so there's no deliberative items on our agenda.
Okay.
So unless, and I'm trying to see if anyone else has gotten on, Mike, can you see that?
Elizabeth just came on.
So, yes, we do have a. Yes, we do have a quorum at this point, Chairman Redd, so you might want to call the meeting to order and then we can proceed as you described.
Okay, so um, Mr. Chair, with your permission, the, I would like to call to order the finance committee of the Norfolk County Advisory Board meeting for this date.
Yes.
The only items are on our agenda are the minutes from the previous meeting and then we will be joining with the commissioners to listen to the budget presentations. I'd like to call the roll of members who are present, Mr. Baldiff.
He's here, uh, there, we can see you, Kyle, can you speak?
Yes, yes, here, present, sorry, I was pulling down a shade.
It's Kyle. Dr. Childs?
Here.
And it is my understanding that the three of us are the only members who are on, is that correct, Mike, from what you can see or Bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The first item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Call the roll because we are doing this virtually. All in favor, Doc, I'll start, go reverse order, Dr. Childs, reverse.
Yes, I'm in favor.
All right, Mr. Baldiff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, the remaining part of our meeting will be. To join with the commissioners in. Participating in the budget presentation, so thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Redd. Commissioners, do you care in which order we do these departments, do you want to do the smallest first? Because it's generally less discussion. Or do we want to start with the registry, which is probably, it's certainly our largest budget today? I have no, no care.
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, in emailing and confirming today with the departments, I did mention that they would go in order of how they were presented, I think actually. I like with the elected officials first.
I didn't notice that, then that answers my question. We're gonna open up today with the Registry of Deeds and Register O'Donnell is here, so I'll turn it over to him. Everyone have their budget? Okay, come register, O'Donnell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, hello, Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Stady, Director Mullin, all the people on the advisory board and other interested people and certainly to the advisory board members. Dr. Childs and Kyle and Joe, hello, hopefully, hopefully, everyone's well and it it really doesn't matter whether I'm first or not, I'm. Someone else wants to go first, that's great, but I.
Okay.
It it is what it is, so um, you know, maybe let somebody else take this, the arrows, I guess, huh? But anyway, the budget that gets submitted is uh. Was sent over timely, it was sent over with the instructions as far as contractual obligations, so when you look at group one. There was contractual obligations and step raises, both union and non-union pursuant to what the county director sent over, those numbers were sent to us. Um, I did send a letter to the commissioners and and I know it was put out there as far as an additional two union positions. Grade eleven, they they are approximately forty-four thousand dollars each, so and again, one of the reasons doing it is, I think this budget. Really tries to address workload issues, the increase in activity that's taken place. There was a hundred and eighty thousand documents recorded in twenty twenty and I have to compliment the employees, all the employees, union, non-union, everyone pulled their weight, we tried to do it safely. Knock on wood, we haven't had one COVID, you know, positive incident, so a lot of activity. And we have to address it because, you know, documents are getting recorded, they have to be scanned, they have to be indexed, they have to be collated, we still do the books. So there's a lot of process to it and that's part of, you know, the request on group one. And, you know, it also reflects more documents, more revenues, again, the revenues unfortunately don't go all to the county, they go state, county, local. By statute, and we also collect the CPA monies for projects that get collected through, so. You know, there was a lot of activity there, to give you a sense, there was sixty-eight million dollars collected in fiscal, I mean, in calendar year twenty compared to fifty-six in calendar nineteen, so very busy. We had some, some stresses, of course, with the COVID, but the market really took off and the the people here at the registry did tremendously well in in, you know, keeping service going. Every workday, there's people physically present here, we were operational every workday since the declaration of March tenth. As far as the other groups, as I pointed out in the letter to the commissioners, there there was a request to do a side letter. The group two and group three really reflects. Last year's budget, try to, we're trying to move forward from last year's budget, but during the course of the fiscal year, and I appreciate the support of the commissioners and the advisory board. There was fifty thousand dollars more put into group two from where we were on July first. And and group two is is contractual services. Uh, group three is supplies and materials, you know, the toners and it's all COVID supplies and things like that. Again, thanks to the commissioners, thanks to the advisory board, fifty thousand dollars more was was put in from July first on that, so. The request was just basically reflecting where we started on July first and the increases that took place during the year. And again, the money's being spent and we're on track to to plead those. Funds by the course, by the end of June thirtieth, so clearly, the revenues are needed to to stay operational. And if there's any questions or any thoughts, certainly, I I welcome them.
Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Two questions to Mr. O'Donnell, twofold, the first one is relative to the fire, I know your budget was prepared prior to that. So does this reflect or is there a need to perhaps adjust this because of that, you know, that little incident that did, is gonna result in some loss of materials? And the second thing, Billy, was there anything because of the pandemic, because of the COVID crisis, that you had to expend? That you either got reimbursed or you're waiting for reimbursement on that you'd want to highlight, that's all, thank you, thank you. Well, again, we we thank, on the on the first point, the budget was prepared before the fire. Right. And clearly, we're sorting through damages, I know there was a meeting yesterday, Mr. Mullin was there, the the facilities, Nancy Rockwell was there as well as Serve Pro and a representative of the insurance company. So that will have to unfold, you know, clearly, there was a loss and and we'll have to see how, where that takes us on June thirtieth, but there was some, some damages and loss. But the budget that was prepared didn't reflect the fire, it just reflect what had been given during the course of our last fiscal year and. And I'm sorry, Dick, the second question.
Yeah, the second thing had to do with.
I'm getting old.
No, it's okay, no, well, the second one is on the pandemic, was there anything perhaps in your department that you had to incur? That either you're waiting to be reimbursed on or didn't get reimbursed on it, now, is is the pandemic reflected in here, the, you know, the COVID crisis that we're all enduring, that's all, just.
Yeah, I think, you know, and again, you know, thanks to the, you know, to to the county structure, to the county commissioners, to the advisory board. There was some reimbursements that the the county administration had gathered and sent into A and F and, you know, part of that fifty thousand. That's been accounted for, it was principally, I mean, we've spent money on supplies, but so has the maintenance, they've been great, they've 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 done a lot. And we have our own supplies and and we've spent out of that as well, but when that reimbursement came, the directors suggested and 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 to to put it back to where we spent a lot was on the computers, you know, you you're. Reorienting the whole structure and that was part of what happened in group two, so yes, the, there was a reimbursement that was secured by the county that flowed back to us. And that's included in here, but we need, we we have computer demands right through, but there's certainly. It was certainly helpful to get that fifty thousand, which, you know, was was. Well needed because of of the need for computers, printers, there was more emphasis on electronic recording now because people couldn't physically come into the building, we do have a drop off box.
That's what I was getting.
Yeah, it's been factored in, Dick, and.
That's what I'm saying.
We tried to, you know, be be cognizant of of budgetary concerns as we move forward.
Well, I just want to, if I may, I want to commend you and your staff during this pandemic, one of the things that has been, I think, outstanding is the fact that the registry has been open. And has facilitated the documentation of permits and other things that had to take place, you did a good job, your staff should be commended. I know, you know, a lot of people are worried about going to work and a safe environment, those kind of concerns like that, but obviously indirectly or directly, you do help the county, you know that. You know, we all know that with the revenue you generate, and I think you should all be commended for that, so I thank you, that's all, good budget.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
Nice job, Bill.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins, thank you, Peter, appreciate it.
Okay.
Enjoy skiing.
I got a couple of questions, I might need some help from Michelle, but I don't think so. Commiss, Register O'Donnell, under. Supplies and materials. Appropriated in in twenty twenty-one is seventy-five. Thousand and this request is one twenty-five, is that the extra? Um, we we, in, under the CARES Act, we gave you fifty and fifty this year, correct?
There was fifty thousand and it was into group two for the, for all the computer supplies. The other request we made, and again, appreciate your support and the commissioner's support and the advisory board's support. Was another fifty grand, the fifty grand for supplies, if you remembered, and again, I'm trying to move forward, there was, you know, a cut in the budget supplies of thirty-two thousand. And when the advisory board voted that fifty grand, that wasn't because of the fire, that was back in the fall, it was because paper supplies and things like that, because now, think about it, people used to bring the paper to us to record. Now it comes over the computer, we have to print it, get it into books, so that was a separate request that was paid out of deeds excise, that fifty thousand dollars under group three. And it included some COVID information, a COVID cost, but it also included like toners and batteries and kits and 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 and. Things that get the computers operational as well as the copy machines that are here.
Okay, I I don't want to get confused here, and I have no issues about the fire, I mean, I understand it, but I, none of that, and if I does not enter this as far as I can.
Exactly.
And if it asks to, we will address, I thought when we gave you the CARES Act money that it was the one, it stressed it was one time only. No, I don't have the minutes of. Of our supplemental budget meeting, but wasn't, I'm I'm under the impression it's one time only.
Yeah, but what I, what I'm trying to point out is, our request last year was for four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred, it was cut fifty-eight thousand five hundred, and, you know, we moved forward on that. So we started, you're right, at four hundred and one thousand, and then fifty grand came in, which adds up to four hundred and fifty-one thousand, whether that money came from CARES Act or anything else. It it's, it's not only has been used, we are on track, I think we have in group two, twenty thousand dollars left because, till till June thirtieth. So please understand, you know, no matter what the original, origin, origination of the fifty thousand that was voted by the supplemental appropriation. It was needed and still is needed to stay operational and I I think all you have to do is, again, these numbers get presented to us from the county. You know, moving forward and, you know, it's, it it it's a cost, so yes, we were thankful that the fifty grand came in from the CARES Act reimbursement, but if it didn't, we would have made a request for another fifty thousand out of deeds excise like we did with group group supplies, because it was needed. So the four hundred and fifty-one thousand that's requested really reflects what was in last year's budget as a four hundred and one thousand plus the fifty thousand that came in. Thankfully, by your vote and the advisory board vote, and it's, it it's just needed. And it's, it's, it's not outrageous and fiscal nineteen, look, you know, you just look at what's been spent in the past, it's certainly needed to 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 run these places. It certainly needed to, to, to run the place.
So in fiscal 19, under two, you spent 522,000.
Exactly.
Right. Okay. And then you asked for 451 last year. We cut it back to 401. And then we're back to 451 with you if you add the 50,000 in. But if we, if, if we, if I was under the impression, is anyone else under the impression that was a one time? I mean, I'm not sure how we're doing with CARES. It can, it's certainly going to come up in this, this discussion, but in so far has been good. But I get, I get very nervous basing up.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
Next year's budget on last year.
Go ahead. I think it was a one time. I think you're right, Mr. Chairman. You're right. But what I think the commit, the registrar is doing, he's saying he needed that amount. He wants, moving forward, that figure is almost what you're going to need to move forward because of, you know, some of the ongoing costs related to the pandemic, whether or without CARES, because of increased paper and printing and things like that. And maybe when the pandemic gets over, Billy, that number might go back down. Hopefully it will, but I, I understand what you're doing here, Billy. I mean, you're trying to put it back to the funding that was the year before, I think. Am I right? Am I looking at the right thing?
It's, it's still under our original request last year, which was our request every year. We were always level funded and as you saw in 19, it was 522. We, you know, but we always requested 459,500 and that's what got cut 58,500 last year.
Okay.
And then the 50,000 came back in.
I, I get it.
And, you know, again, deeds excise would provide the, you know, the cost of it.
Okay, I, I want to flag that though, because I want to have a further discussion and maybe, maybe I'm ignorant to the, to the explanation, but I don't, I don't think so. And number three, supplies and materials was 87,000 in 19, 99,020. And then last year was 75,500. Is this 125, I'm sorry, 75,050? Is this 125,50 reflect this other 50,000?
Yeah, in other words, our request again last year, not to keep going back, but it gives you a sense. There was a request for 107,500 in, in our budget. It got cut 32,000 to 75,050. Again, thank you to the commissioners. Thank you to the advisory board. We put a request in out of deeds excise, which is, you know, deeds excise has been vibrant for 50,000, be, again, because of increased cost of tone is not to belabor it. So that's, it was basically the seven, what it was cut to on July 1st of 75,050 and the 50,000 that the advisory board and county commissioners voted in the fall. And that's where we came up with, with this number, 125,050. And once again, we are on track to have that completely depleted by June 30th.
Okay, let's move to revenues on the revenue page. And contractual services subtotal for the material. Badges and obligations. I notice that revenues, that you haven't, it includes a $2.5 million projection in recording fee revenue. Is that, that's accurate, right?
Yeah, we, over, over the years, we've been asked, again, it's really up to the county structure to do it, but we would always, they would, we'd always be asked to give us, give a, give a revenue number. Anyone knows I'm more conservative on, on numbers, but yeah, last, and, and last year, the revenues, thankfully. I'd always, I'd rather be low and then have the revenues come in and then it puts you in a better position as opposed, you know, making that number instead of 2.5, make it 3.2 million and you don't hit it. Now, now there's problems. Now, I don't come up with the numbers you use, but over the time, I was always asked to throw a number in there and, and then the county directors in the past and the current one would, would come up with their budget estimates.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually not questioning the 2.5 thing. But I didn't see anything included or any projections for these excise or online fee revenues. Now, what's the reason for not projecting those two fee, two lines?
Typically, typically, yeah, typically it was never, never asked. So I just did it. I mean, I can, i- i- if you want, I, I can tell you like deeds excise, for instance, fiscal 2019 was $40 million, but that's total. So I'd have to give a breakdown of what's come in. I know this year, it's, it's been, it's been high. Let's see, the county share of deeds excise, if, if you want it for fiscal year 20 was 2.5, 2.5 million. Fiscal 21 was still in. Fiscal 19, it was 255260086. Fiscal 18, 2521584. I know, I believe it was through December, the county director can confirm. I believe the county share was almost 1.190220602. So this year you've had a lot of deeds excise. So that's only halfway through the year, you're at 1.9 million, if that gives you any sense.
You know, if you could drop them down and send them to me, I just want to have them in the package before we have a final. I, I don't expect, if you don't have them today and you have a lot of data there, which is good, but it, it, it needs more, I need to examine it more. Two more questions. I noticed that the online fee revenues in the past year and a half are half of what they used to be. And I'm looking at a sheet, 18, 19, 20, 21 estimate.
Be getting that.
That's put a strain on the county funding streams. Do you know why this has happened or has anything changed with the brown tech technology or with the fees being charged?
No, the fee, the fee, the fees are set by, by statute and, you know, again, what, what sheet are you looking at?
What sheet is that? Yeah, where, where are you?
But anyway, I could speak while you're looking, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
But, but as far as, you know, again, some revenues go up, others go down. But, you know, everything gets collected. You're right, we're still one of the, we are, you know, I may, I may get elected as a Democrat, but I try to run it like a Republican. We charge money, you know, money and, and we've used the monies. Some of the monies go to the county and we've used the monies to try to get back online. We're back to 1793. So not everyone's happy that, that the registry charges, that's for sure. But we do charge.
I'm looking at a sheet that I made after looking at your budget. 18 was 340, 19 was 280, 21, 20 was 310. And now we're down to 180. This is county share of the internet revenue.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to understand that given that the volume is so high and up. So to drop almost by 50%, that's what I'm, that's I think why that number stands out, Bill. Because you're making a point that your, your volume's really high, but we're seeing a marked drop.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah, well, I guess, not to quote Bill Belichick, it is what it is. Because obviously if there's more money, it's, 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 that's a shared 50/50 split. So clearly, you know, you want more, more of it to come in.
Did you see a sheet, Billy? Have you seen it? Did you find the right sheet?
No, I.
It's a, the drop off county revenues, 18 to 21 and under, he's right, under 20, it has 310,000, then 21 estimate is 180, 22 estimate is 180. So it does kind of drop off. That's weird.
Oh, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't have those numbers. I, I have the deeds excise and, and the revenues from the, you know, transaction fees, but.
Okay, well, can, I, I, I'd like to go back and revisit that one for sure. And my last question is, you've requested two additional positions. I could not. And I was curious about talking about justifying two additional positions. And then I have a minor question about these jobs that say that's, well, they're, they're not funded anymore. They say pending, but this is, okay, no, I only have the question about what, where and what are the two additional positions?
The, two additional positions, again, from a historical basis, there was 11 union positions cut. My dad climbed poles for the Boston Edison. So I, I, you know, feel strongly that, that working people should be given a chance and it's two union positions, but more so there's a business reason for it other than, you know, China, trying to help union people. And, and again, remember there, there was, you know, and again, not to relive history. But when you look at, for instance, through January, I'm looking at deeds excise monies of $3 million were collected through January. You know, of which the county has gotten, again, this is fiscal, you know, you know, some big totals. You know, 4 million for the county and the registry gets 1.3 million, you know, with the deeds excise. So, Mr. Chairman, what I'm trying, it has been busy. And with busyness, you know, I'm here every day. I see the stresses that busyness, busyness in, in these COVID times has caused, not just on the union people, but on the, on the non-union, on everybody here, working hard. The work will get done, but we still have to keep the quality up. And we also have a training component. You can't just come into the registry and know, in essence, documents that have a legal consequence. So the, the two positions are needed. I think I, I mentioned to them in calendar year 20, 68 million dollars in revenue were collected compared to 56 million in calendar year 2019. But just on the deeds excise that the county gets, a lot has come in. So you need people to process that and make sure it gets all done. Because it's, it's, you know, again, the money gets distributed and by statute, all kinds of ways. But the document volumes up and more importantly, I think not for kind, th- this budget puts us on our way to keep, keep the quality that we have here. Because you gotta, you gotta train people and give people opportunities in order to keep the good operation that we, we have here. And I'd, I'd like to think that's what this budget is doing. It's, it's two needed positions at $44,000 each on, on a operation that last calendar year collected 68 million dollars. Again, it doesn't all go to the county. I get that. But, you know, it's a business operation and those two, those two folks, that two positions would fill a business need at the register.
All right, so the general level entry positions.
They're union positions, yeah.
When you say union as opposed to?
Non-union.
All right, I understand that. All right, I'm looking, okay. I'm, I'm looking at the, the personal services form one. Okay, I understand that. Um, I, I might have more questions, but I don't think they're going to be today. But I don't want to hold anyone up. Does the commissioners have any other questions for Register O'Donnell? And I think, I think we all know what the registry has always been. And I don't think anyone isn't aware of it, but I also know that I went to other departments, unfortunately this week, and I'm getting back. There's a structural deficit here across the county that's better than it used to be, but it's so. It's, it's, it, I don't want it to strangle us and we gotta, we've got to really do the very, very best we can. And that message is for everyone, but since you're first, you're going to have to hear it more than anyone else. Okay, last call for Representative O'Donnell.
Joe, can I jump in a second?
Sure.
So, so, but we all know, we've talked about it in the past, Finance Committee knows about it. Carl brings it up every year to me. We do have a structural deficit. It's at the county level. It's at the Aggie level. It's why we've been trying to get legislation to receive some additional funding for the county for years, for decades. And COVID got in the way this time again. It's always something. We have refiled our bill to try to get some more money to come in through the legislature. I'm not sure if that's going to go anywhere. But Joe is spot on. We do have a structural deficit and we, we do have jobs we have to do. We do have a structural deficit. So the, the budget's always a wish list and we always know that. And so, you know, we're going to take all the budgets in and we're going to, you know, review them and, and give everyone as much as we can. But, you know, this is just more of an informational meeting as opposed to a promise as to what you're going to get.
Right.
Mr. Chair. Maybe, yeah, I would, maybe see if the finance, we see if the finance committee members have any questions. I know Dr. Childs had one question, a comment. Would that be okay? Dr. Childs, do you have any?
Go ahead, Dr. Childs.
Thanks, thanks. Yeah, I do have a, I do have a comment, a kind of a commentative question. I really appreciate, Joe, you're pointing out that there's a structural deficit because that, that's, that's the framework, the context in which we're all working, every department is working. But I, I, the CARES Act money, I just had a question about that. Was the CARES Act money 50,000 or two times 50,000?
Through the chair, to me, Dr. Childs?
Yeah, that would be fine. It was the CARES Act.
No, it, it was, in the fall, the county director, you know, mentioned or put forth the 50,000. So that was 50,000, not two times 50.
Okay.
And again, the other 50 was, we, we were, we would have requested it probably both ways. But the other request was 50,000 through the deeds excise.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand because it sounds to me like before the CARES Act money came in, which allowed us to backfill 50,000, the actually maintenance of effort bottom line, starting point in the budget, the prior year's budget was down at the 50,000 less than that. And so I just think it's important to recognize that by adding the 50,000 into the baseline budget, you're starting off at a baseline budget that's 50,000 above where you originally had your maintenance of effort. So I think it's, it's, it's good to just have that clear to people. It, that, that, how you make the decision obviously is based on what the whole context is and what the whole budget looks like. And you're, you're weighing a lot of different departments. But I, I don't think we do want to, I don't think we want to pretend that the maintenance of effort was the higher number because the maintenance of effort is the lower number.
That's my point.
We were fortunate to have the CARES Act to backfill what was originally a reduction that was anticipated. So I just, I, that's important. And it sounds like the maintenance of effort in group three, I'm a little less clear about that. It sounds like maybe there was a reduction there that, so the maintenance of effort would have been a lower number. So I just, but I think the CARES Act does make it a little bit confusing to people. So I would just argue that especially for the advisory board members, I think it's really useful to be just crystal clear about how that, how those numbers evolved. And then the two FTEs, Bill, I just wondered, are, are there things you're not getting done right now because you don't have those two FTEs?
The, we, we will get, you know, jobs done, but we, we've been here every day. And people, people, whether you want to hear it or not, and it sounds like maybe some people don't want to hear it. There's been stress, you know, keeping, I'm sure if you're in your government entities in your local towns. So people are working, we're getting it done. But there's a need, especially when 11 union positions were cut. The, you know, and not to belabor it, but, you know, so, and to give you a sense of numbers, Barry, Register Barry Hannan had 69 people here in, in, in the late 80s into 90.
That was before the internet too, I might point out.
Right, well, and I, I'm getting to that. I knew, I knew, Dr. Childs had picked that up. Paul Harold, Paul Harold, Register Harold, God, God rest his soul, had 56 employees. We have 48. Yes, we have the internet, but there's still, there's more need to index. You know, we have modernized the operation, which clearly we have, you know, we have less people. But you still, it, it's basically a legal operation. And, you know, we're one of the few registries that have four lawyers on staff, but we, we trying to train people. It takes a while to get trained. So to me, yes, there's, there's been impacts. I think, you know, you might be getting the job done, but people are killing themselves to get the jobs. And, and that doesn't mean, you know, people are going to skate around here. Anyone that knows our management style knows we, 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 we get work out of people. But this is a need for quality. And as far, as far as the CARES Act, keep, keep in mind, we, we have deeds excise money. It's dedicated deeds excise money. We're making a request in group two and we were making a request in group three. But then the county director said, well, 50 grants coming from, from the CARES Act. So either way, we were making that additional request out of the deeds excise, which has been coming in tremendously. So wherever you go with it, I think it's important to remember, we had originally requested 49,500 last year. It got cut to 401. If you look at what was spent in fiscal year 2019, it's right on the sheet, 522,000. So you're right, the CARES Act does seem to complicate things. But let's be clear, we would have made the same request we did as we did. But let's be clear, we would have made the same request we did as we did in group three. Take another 50 grand out of our deeds excise, which there is money in the deeds excise collections.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I do not. I thank the Register for his presentation and I appreciate the line of questioning from the commissioners and FinCon.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Register, if I could just come off of Beth's question there. To your credit and your organization's credit, you've done an amazing job in keeping the registry running and we've acknowledged that before. And it is amazing to see that the revenue is coming in, you're staying with it even with the COVID issues. My question is more operational. So during the course of COVID, how did you manage people in the building? I, I think I have an understanding of it, but I'm not sure. So that people wouldn't be near each other with some people in, some people out. How, how did that work?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And operationally, it's kind of evolved. I mean, clearly, even, even before March 10th, when you were reading up on things, we had to take measures out, positioning people and, and redoing spots. So people were, were six feet away. That was March of 2020. We came up with guidelines. It's been, it's been a combination of things. People in the building. We, we've got some people, we, we used the disaster recovery office, which is over in the commissioner's office for a while. We've used the technology, you know, to, you know, sometimes because you, you know, again, depending on what the percentages were as far as COVID. So it's evolved during this whole year, but you know, currently we have some people who, they might be in for, for this week, but they're out next week, working on the, the computer, working remotely. And believe me, we'd rather have people here because the law sets up, the registry is the finish line. If, if you're recording a, a home and, and some debtor is after you, it's, it's a race notice state. It's a race to the finish line here at the registry as to who wins legally. So it really has complicated matters, but it, it has evolved. And again, I got to thank the employees. But we, we've spread people out. The maintenance staff was great. We have glass, you know, the, you know, glass up, plenty of supplies. If people need a mask, they get a mask. We have the gels and everything around. So it's been a cooperative thing and I got to thank the union too, because you know, we met back in March of 2020. We had an impact bargain, a lot of things that we, we did and everyone has been very supportive. And, and again, I got to thank the commissioners as well for recognizing a few things and, and we'll go from there. Hopefully, hopefully there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
So just to kind of go back on that, so you have people in the building like for a week at a time and then they're out and then they're in and they're out just to keep everyone safe and.
Yeah. I mean, for a while there, we had everybody in the building, you know, and, and it's evolved. We've gone to team schedule, team approaches. And, and, and some people have been physically in the building every day and other people have some, you've got to work with the team you have as far as skills and, and things of that sort. But, you know, currently it's, I would call it more a hybrid approach that, you know, some, some people who are very skilled and could do recordings. They're, they're in here doing it five days, but they're at home doing it only because if someone gets sick at here, you can bring a team in. Or what we had, one person, when I say get sick, one person, their, their son had an issue. And, you know, I wasn't even thinking of it, but it was great because that happened to be the time that she was working remotely. So it didn't affect in here. So, you know, some of it I think is just, I think we've had good policies, but some of it's just luck too, as far as staying.
So the people who are at home are all working from home?
Yes. Yeah. If, if, and I know that's tougher with some people coming in. But if some people don't say, have the skill set to be working remote, they're here, you know, they have to do the jobs here. So. Balancing act, because as I said, I think you want to keep the finish line and have everyone working at the finish line, which is the registry of deeds. But you just also got to deal with the COVID implications.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I think the members have received the answers they were looking for.
Okay. One more introduction. I noticed that Amy, let me see, Frugaleddy, is that close? Of Wellesley is here. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you very much.
She's a member, of course, of the advisory board and I want to welcome her and I'm sure she's got long history in the town of Wellesley and other public positions she's held with budgets. It's always about the budget. I just want to add for our purposes that you're succeeding a gentleman that we all really, really liked and loved very much and was as perceptive as anyone I ever met about public budgets. That'd be Owen Duggan, and we really, really enjoyed and listened to him very carefully. And he had, in addition to budget sense, he had such a great background and such a worldly sense and governmental sense. That he is a true gem and I'm sure you're going to be too, but you are filling big shoes, Amy.
I will try my best. I'm not sure I'll be able to fill his shoes, but I will try my best.
Okay. Unless registrar, and I think I call him Representative O'Donnell, has a question of us. We're, we're done with the registry of deeds today. I only will emphasize. You go down to the school, you go to the engineering department, you're going to go to the treasurer's department is next. We're going to go to maintenance, which is a fairly large department. It's always, there's a lot of extra discussion on the registry, but where else are we going to add, cut? You know, do the best we can because this CSIs dictates a lot of this conversation and the sheer function of the registry. So that be as it may, that's, that's the goal is to do the whole thing in one package. And we are under certain governmental guidelines and we are going to meet them. Having said that, I'd like to move to treasurer's department. I noticed the treasurer is Treasurer Bloddy's here and I noticed Joe DiOrio is here. And I'm looking at the treasurer's budget. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. And appreciate your opportunity and thank you for all the support and the help and the guidance I received the first couple of months here. Joe, you are also, right?
Yep. Joe's there, yes.
So what I thought I would do is we're one office, we're one wall away from each other. But what I thought I would do is just do a few highlights. This is my first experience presenting. And then I'll allow you to, to, you know, dig deeper or ask questions, but let me give you what I think are probably the most salient points. First of all, we're asking for a $16,769 increase to the budget. It's a 2.92% increase. About 11,900 almost of that increase is a 2.25% of cost of board salary increase, increases. Our expense line increases only 0.67% increase or $4,875. Majority of that is $4,500 or, or probably rounded for news and periodical lines of, for subscriptions, State House News Service, Wall Street Journal and other journals in periodicals. Equipment line is cut $1,000. All other increases are minor adjustments, projected price increases that are expected. And so last year, you know, you folks approved Jim Timmurch's budget at $574,000. And 974,000 and added $17 in this year's request is 591,000 with $686. And you guys, I think have a copy of all the budgets. So I think that would be my presentation. And Joe, Joe D, if you want to add anything to that, feel free. You folks can ask questions.
The, the only thing is I would add is that we tried to keep everything mostly level funded. It's mainly that like, like Mike said, that the subscription line for the additional things that the treasurer wants to add. Any other increases were only by like a hundred dollars here and there, postage up a little bit.
And I also understand as Joe made it say, this is just, I have opportunity presented and, you know, it, it, it's, it's not a, it's not an acceptance on your part. So we, we understand the, the format.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Of your $16,000 increase, 11,000 is salary. So we're really talking about, I mean, these are promised salaries. So we're.
Exactly.
Talking about $5,000. I.
Yeah, there are no raises in there, right?
Just the, the, there are no new raises. There's a big cost of livings in there, right, Joe DiOrio?
That's correct.
Yeah. That's a pass. You know, we voted a couple of years ago and this is the last one we have. We've got no other. And we've got to renegotiate with everyone, everyone. So the only thing here is a cost of living of 2%, I believe, 2.14%. Or 2.5%, I guess. Someone can correct me. It's in the twos, but a very low twos.
So 2.25%.
That's it. 2.25%. And that's the only, only thing built in and it's built into every one of our employees. I, I, this isn't a question about money, but when you see the term vacant and there's money next to it, we always ask. I, I know about a year and a half that we created, the former treasurer asked for a records compliance position that I think at the time was sharing the fees, something with the retirement board. And I noticed that change been made there. I didn't know if you've had time to think about it. With only five people in the office, that's the sixth position. I, I didn't know if you had thoughts about it. You could tell us.
I may not say this. I haven't had a lot of time to think about it. It's a business flow and what's needed and not needed. But I'm, I'm not in any great rush to fill it. I, I want to just analyze it and whatever, if we don't fill it, we'll return the money. If you guys, if you folks, I mean, keep it in the budget. But I'm, I'm still trying to figure out the business flow and, you know, justify something like that or not. And I didn't want to prematurely take it out and find out later that it was something necessary in terms of servicing the rest of the county departments.
I certainly don't think we should take it out of the budget. I mean, we may remove the money until you need it, but I, I don't know. We're, we're going to have our discussions. That's the only, that's the only question there. But I mean.
So, so.
You're pretty lean now. I don't know. I don't, I don't like to say.
The answer to that question is, there's no immediate plans to fill that job and there's no decision on it. And I'm not sure even what the presumption is if we will or not. It's just I've only been here about eight weeks and I just did not want to automatically remove it. But I, I'm not sitting here now telling you that I'm, you know, there's a dying need for it. I don't know yet. That's something Joe.
No, we want you to, we want you to analyze it. Okay. Any other questions, commissioners?
Nice job, Mike and Joe. Very well. Well done.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice job, guys.
Great to see you guys.
Yeah.
How about the advisory board folks here?
I don't know if they have any questions, Carl and Beth?
None.
This sounds really reasonable. Thank you. No questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Treasurer.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I took a motion on, on the registry deeds, but I'd like a motion to take this under advisement to be acted upon at a later date, which I think is the motion for all of them today.
Do you want to take them all at once?
I'm sorry.
We, we could, we could take them all at once, Joe, if you want.
After we finish maintenance, just for orderly, audit purposes, I, I, I'm into the motion.
Let's take maintenance up, then we'll do that. That sounds good.
Okay. Last call to, for Treasurer Bloddy.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Joe.
I apologize. I was remiss. Two other members are on the call. You had introduced Amy. I didn't see her on my screen and I apologize, Amy, for that. And Mr. Connors is now on.
I do see the chairman. I'm sorry.
Compliment, a full compliment to FinCon members. So, Amy, would you have any questions of the treasurer?
No questions.
Good. Okay.
Excellent.
He said no question.
Okay. That's excellent too. So you're all set Chairman Redden and your, and your team on the pressure.
Okay. My apologies to Paul and Amy.
Quite right. Thank you. Sorry I'm running late.
They've had a long day. They had retirement board this morning and commissioners this afternoon, you know.
And a funeral in between, Joe. And a funeral in between.
Oh, really? Okay. Was it Pat Monroe? Not to go off the subject.
It was yesterday.
Okay. Okay. Last call. Again, we're all done with the treasurer for today and thank you, Mr. Treasurer and thank you, Joe DiOrio, as always.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I was on for Joe DiOrio, but I was on my phone. I hadn't got on the community yet.
John McGowan, Superintendent of Buildings.
Good afternoon, commissioners and advisory board members. I hope everyone is well. My budget is silly line. I, I, I didn't change too much on it at all. And the personal services stayed the same, which is 2,46,000. Contractual services stayed the same. That's 1,200. Supplies and materials, I had an increase of about 11,000 or 10,000 due to the fact that we need more cleaning supplies. And that also covers the plumbing and electrical supplies. But it's mainly cleaning supplies plus the COVID stuff too. Current charges and obligations, it just, I, I raised it a little bit because of the, that's the taxes for the water and sewer. And I'm sure that's going to go up. Now, the equipment, that's a wishlist really. That's a snow blower attachment for the barb cat. That's something I, I really, I really don't need. I could get along without that. I could buy a lot of shovels for $8,000. And I, that's something if you want to cut out, I, I asked for it, but I, I don't really have to have it. So $30,000 for structural improvements, that's to replace three ductless splits in Brookline Courthouse. That's the material plus labor. That's an estimated price anyway. Other than that, just about everything is the same. I, I, I know I did send you a letter about what I wanted to do with a night foreman. I don't know if, if you have an opinion on it or what, but my reasoning for it was that it's already, I already have a night supervisor. The foreman's position was installed by the past director. Unbeknownst to me, I, I had, I wasn't much of an input into it. And, and it was, the job was filled. But it's something that I could fill, I can fill two spaces. I could put two people to work for that one. Which I already have a night supervisor, which is John Bignony. And I have a painting foreman too. So, I mean, a little heavy in that area there, which I need people that, I need people to, I need to cope with this COVID. As it, right now, I have one, two, three people out with COVID. They're out for two weeks. I'm already, I used to have 30 employees. I'm down to 28. I got one out in comp. So there's four there. And not to mention the ones that call in every day. That's one of the reasons why I asked for that. It's a request. It's up to you. As always, it's up to you, not up to me. And, but for your consideration, anyway. Any, any questions I can answer, I, I will.
Before I go to the commissioners, John, I, 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 we are going to entertain your, your side letter here. I don't think it's a matter at this stage for the advisory board, not that we have any secrets and by the summer we won't, we'll resolve it. But I'd like to hold the, your 2022 reorganization request or exempt. Take it, we're not going to take that money out of the budget right now, especially when we're, we're in our, our question and answer period for the next couple of months. But I promise you that we'll get to this roving utility work of position versus building custodians within this cycle. And before we come out with a final budget, but I don't want to get into specifics because I, I think the union. The specifics, because I, I think the union I know one of these positions is not union, the top one, of course, but I, I, I think it's a subject for the three Commissioners first, before we go public with it. That's all I'll say on that. But everything else is open season. Do we have any questions of, of John McGowan? Again, you heard it all in all. What a great job. Mostly, you hear, what a great job, and we've been hearing a lot of it. I've found that unfortunately, COVID really put pressure on everyone, as Reg. O'Donnell said, but let me tell you, in having been out in these courthouses and gone to some of these clean sessions, when they have to go in and spray everything and do everything, it's really put pressure on the maintenance department.
No, I'm all honest. Those split systems, are they heating or heating and cooling?
I believe they're both, heating and cooling.
Okay, thank you.
So we've really been very proud of maintenance last year, but it's our second largest department, or actually, third, the school's largest, and, you know, it's going to get the same scrutiny as everything else gets. And I'd like to have a couple of questions asked, if the Commissioners have any, and then I have one. Commissioners, questions for John McGowan?
Peter? I'm good. I'm good, Dick. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for you?
Yes.
So, John, good job in the short time I've been able to serve. It's been great, and I keep hearing good things, and I keep seeing good things. I think, as you know, I've got a chance to visit several courts, so I'm going to take in the rest very soon. And everywhere I go, the work is great, the place looks clean, you're doing a good job. That said, let me ask you what I did to, similar to Mr. O'Donnell. Number one, in terms of the pandemic and the COVID, are there any things built into this budget that were caused by the pandemic that you're going to need, you know, that you could break out that won't be reimbursed by CARES? And number two, I guess we're going to delay that decision. I wanted to talk to you a little more about that decision to utilize two people in place of the night person, but I guess the Chair has decided to talk about that later. So how about in terms of the pandemic? Do you have, have you, has your budget been reflected in terms of things we're going to need more of moving forward? That may not be reimbursed by CARES?
Yes. We've, we were, we put in a request. There's one, what was that thing? The they sent out a thing saying a voluntary, from the state, would give us equipment if we put in for it, which we did. We put in for 1,000 masks, 1,000 ant soap, ant this, that, quite a list of material that we put in for. Whether we're going to get it or not, I, I do not know. But we did get some CARES money reimbursed to us. But it was reinvested into other things that, that we used at FLY2. Which was duck cleaning, in, I believe, in Quincy. And
Brookline.
In Brookline. But the money that we got, for the money that we expended, you know, for all the equipment that we needed, which was masks, gloves, spray, spray guns, this, that. I mean, it's, it is a lot of money that we went through, and we got some of it back. Hopefully, we get some more. But I don't know if that answers your question or not.
That's what I was looking for. That's, okay.
Yep.
It's, every week, we were spending more money on, on this COVID-19.
And that's, that snow thrower for the Bobcat, you'd be okay if we had a hold on that till next year, if that was something we'd had to cut?
Well, we're a little more, a little more solvent, I would, I don't need that right away. Just something
I don't want to, I don't want to jinx you, but I'm going to say right now, winter's over. It's beautiful out there. You won't need it. You're all done. Snow's over, right? Watch. But anyway. All right, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I have, I have a statement, not a question. John, have you met with the Abrams Group yet?
No.
Our outside agency. We are working with them on a, on a separate capital funding list. I'm just going to ask that, at some point, they're going to come and talk to you. I don't have the, I don't know their, their calendar. I don't want to know it. But I'm, it, we're happy so far. They're going to, the, the snow thrower, before you give it back to us. And I will, we probably will appreciate and take it back. And the 30,000 for the ductless splits are going to be submitted to them, along with everyone else's capital items. They're going to keep a separate capital items list. We're not going to, we're trying to get away from funding capital items in our operational budget, but that's probably because you didn't know, you've always put them in every year, but we'll, we'll get these two requests to them, and at some point they will begin to talk to department heads, and then I think you'll, you'll, you'll find it beneficial, and feel free to tell them anything you want. So I'll take care of that portion of it, and then we'll go from here, but that's the only question I have, and it's not really a question. How about the Advisory Board members?
Any members have questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Chairs.
I have a question. I always have a question.
We appreciate your questions.
John, thank you. This is a really, this is great to have you explain all this. I'm just speaking in support of the snow thrower, the Bobcat snow thrower. And I appreciate your willingness to give it up, but I would ask you to think about how many man-hours that thing would save you. And when you actually put it into those terms, it might be a capital expense, but it actually might save us on the operational personnel expense. So make sure when you, when you're arguing for it, you, you tell them how many hours it's going to save you.
Cool. Good.
I would.
Dr. Childs, if I could jump in, too. So, being a workers' comp attorney, so long as you can keep your limbs away from the, the snow thrower, I, I think you might save some back injuries there, too.
Let's see what happened with, with, out in Dedham here, they removed all the parking meters. At, quite a while ago, and then I said, well, this would be a great time to be able to do the sidewalks, but, you know, go right around the building. But then they turn around, they put new ones in. They have, so it's, it's, I don't think that I could get around it as easy as I could before, so that's another reason why. I have a, I have the guys using snow blowers, you know, rather than Bobcat, but that's a, a snow mover, too, you know, that, that you can go into a pile of snow and and once the guys get through parking lot, parking lot piles snow up, would obstruct the cars coming out of the parking lot, you could use this to relocate the snow. But it's not something that is, I'm in dire need of. But that's why I'm willing to, you know, it's up to you. If you want me to get one, I'll get one, but that's something I really have to have.
You're too kind, John.
Much too honest.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I could use the money.
You're not going to get any money. You might get a snow thrower, but you're not getting any money.
You know, maybe an increase.
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to, yeah. Okay, last call on
Do any other Advisory
And
Who members have questions?
Members have questions. I'm, I'm sure he's got, I'm sure he's got Sheila there with him, who crunches all these numbers and does a good job on the budget.
Mr. Chair, I do have one last comment and question. John, the work that you and your team have done since the beginning of this pandemic has been amazing. Anecdotally, people associated with the courts have told me how impressed they were with the work of your team coming in after exposure and doing all the cleaning, as Shear Shea has said. My question is specific to how you go about doing that, and I'm going to use this as an example. I believe at some point, we'll, we'll use the registry just as, as one of the buildings, has an, as an incident there. Can you describe to me how you respond to that? How many members of your team would go in and do that? And you do, do you do that in every single building, regardless of if it's a district court building, if it's the Superior Court, if it's the registry, are they all treated the same?
Yes. What I do is we have a backpack sprays, it took us quite a while to get, but we have them now. Plus, I have portable guns that do the same thing. But I, I get a team together, and we go into the building. We start on the top floor, we wipe all the phones down, all the chairs down, even under the armrests, because what happens is, if somebody comes down, like, usually, you'd be surprised. Mostly, it's always been probation department people. I, I don't know why, because maybe because they're in more contact with people every day. They're, they're out here, bracelets on people and stuff like that, but what happens is, you don't know where they went in the building, and I can't take a chance when they say, oh, it was, they were only in this office. Well, they might have got up and went to bathroom, or went down the straight, or down the hallway, or, you don't know. So you have to do everything. And you don't know who came in contact with them. So what I do is, I wipe every desk down, every computer, every phone, every chair, spray everything. And clean all the bathrooms, bleach, all of them, and, and it's it's tactful, but it, it keeps everybody safe. And that's, that's what we try to do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I do go with Go ahead.
Every day, we do a wipe down at 10:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon.
And that's in every building?
Every building, yes. Yes, sir.
Every building. Okay.
Have a clean.
The reason I ask that is perfect. That's awesome. So you have the regular cleaning schedule, and then like an emergency response if something comes up?
Yes. And we've had, we've had many of, many cases have come up over the weekends and stuff, but we try to, we try to do it as fast as we can, so they can open up the courts, you know, on Monday. You know, usually, the closing, what happens now is, they, if, if, say, if district comes down with something today, they'd probably close the court down. And what I do is, I have the night crew who went there and disinfect everything, and then tomorrow, I'll do it again. And then they'll open up on Friday. Which, which will be good.
Oh, it's huge. But because of your team's work, right on the front lines of any department in the county, you have been on the front lines of all this and been able to keep things going, whether it's keeping the registry going because it's clean, or keeping the courts going so they can do their business. It's been amazing work. And the question I have is, in your budget, you added an additional $10,000 for supplies as a result of COVID. That's an accurate figure?
Well, it's pretty close. It's, you know, I, we stocked up on a lot. We've got the biggest majority of the expense out. We bought all the equipment, the spraying equipment, and now, that money is basically for a lot of, you know, cleaning stations, you know, with, around the buildings, every courthouse has them. We have to refill it with supplies and cleaning solutions, ant sanitizers, and you know, it's, it's all stuff that we have to, and they go through it pretty quick. Masks, you know, we got, always ordering masks and stuff. So that's what that money is for.
That's awesome. I, I know that each department has some issues with regard to COVID, and just comparing, contrasting the amount of money requested for that is helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John McGowan? Any comments at all here?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Paul.
To John, and was probably answered earlier, but are the maintenance people vaccinated yet?
No, I'm, I'm working. I'm trying to get it done, and I know Michelle Lamborghini is trying to get it done, too. And I'm waiting to hear. It, it's kind of tough to get it, but, because it is I know the court offices had it done in Dedham. But we haven't had it done yet, no.
Is there any movement, Michael? So it's trying to expedite a process for them to get their shots? They may not fall into 75 category, 65 category, first responder?
No, yeah, like, we've been working on that. John's exactly right, and like, Michelle Lamborghini in our office has as well. We've been working with the DA's office. DA Morrissey has been amazing. So what, so when we've also reached out to the Dedham Health Department, the reason the court officers have been already vaccinated so is because they were actually classified in group, so in Phase 2 Group 1. Oh, in a public safety group, but the, all the other court employees are actually, I, I believe they're classified in Phase 2 Group 3. So what we're working on right now with the DA's office is the I like, is a vaccine program for the court-related employees in Phase 2 Group 3. So, and especially with everything that's been coming down from the state. I like, for us, to be honest with you, we were very optimistic about it. However, now with everything, the way everything like is going and rolling out. Like, I was on the phone with the DA, like, actually, like, at 7:30 this morning, and he's working his sources. We've been talking with us. I like, and we're working on it, but it, I mean, at this point, I think it's more of an uphill battle than we thought it was going to be.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Budget, budget, budget. Last call. Okay, well, the joint session was fruitful. I appreciate it. We're on a few more weeks. Next week, Director Mullin, whose budget are we talking about next week?
So, yeah, and next week is the agricultural high schools, the engineering department, and the golf. Yeah, like, in the golf course, but if we can just quickly discuss revenues really quick, I know this is an issue.
Interesting.
True. It's, it's item D. We can discuss anything on, anything on the budget for any and all before we, we have two other matters at Commissioners, but we'll be fine.
Yep. So, yeah, just in terms of the revenues, and I want to like share my screen on two things, and just really quickly, when, so when we met with the FinCom last month, we talked about this initial fiscal year '22 framework. So when we talked about what very conservatively, where we know where we're going, what, like, actually revenues we knew we could count on. And when we talked about just at a baseline with the cost of living agreements, like, actually, the collective bargaining agreements and the cost of living adjustments, we knew and also the increases in debt service, we knew that we were dealing with about $458,000 in expenses that were going to be new. So the only revenue that we were actually anticipating rising at that point was the county investment. Oh, and that was raised about by $166,000.
Mike?
Yeah.
We're having trouble hearing you. There's a we can see it, but we can't hear you. There's some bombs going off behind you or something.
Gee, that's not good.
No.
Yeah, your audio isn't working, Mike.
Something going on.
How's that? Is that better?
Better.
So I'm back in action. Okay. So, so, yeah, like, so basically, as I mentioned, we were generally predicting about a $300,000 variance at the outset from our revenues. I like, in comparing them, all the, actually, to our projected expenses in FY '22. So then, so over the last two weeks, we worked really closely with the Abrams Groups on this, and I'm going to share my screen again. So like, and you'll see that, as we discussed last month, we already created the FY '22 budget portal on our website as well. So like, and you can, right here, you can go into our initial revenue projections. So like, it pulls up, working with the Abrams Group, we took a five-year look back and looked at all the averages about where we've been. Like, in all of our revenues and what we've estimated and what has actually come to fruition. So, so like, for, hold on a sec, just one minute. So in terms of the, so in terms of our registry fees, they, so they've hovered between like, 2.5 and 2.7 million dollars over the last five years. So we think So we think. Oh, like actually, like conservatively increasing that to 2.5 as the register mentioned is more than practical. Our recreational receipts. So like we've been having the last two years estimated at 1.35, $162. So like we think because of the issues in the restaurant business, the view which we lease out, like at the golf course. Like as of right now, we brought it down to 1.3 million dollars, but I think there's, like, I think we're gonna have the ability to bring that back up before the end of the budget process by about $25,000. So the court rentals, and we mentioned this over the last two years, because we, oh, like having large part back the capital out of our operating budgets and because we, oh, and FY20, FY21, we have cut back on personnel. So as of right now, we are only estimating a $3.8 million reimbursement in court rental. So that, oh, actually, there's a $300,000 decrease like from FY21, and that's because of what we spent in FY20. Like in the interest earnings, one of the things, and you can see, so when the FY20 budget to basically build, Ellen, to fill the gap in the FY20 budget. Oh, you can see that we increased it to $125,000. But what we didn't realize is we were planning on, like actually, like the interest on the stabilization account, and we actually can't apply that interest. Oh, like in actual revenue, that interest actually stays with stabilization. So we're downgraded that actually pretty significantly to what the trends I actually have been, and the trends have been right around in the $15,000 range. The miscellaneous receipts, like we brought that down by $45,000. Really, again, working with the Abrahams group, we confirmed that we've been right around 250. So the counties, the county tax assessment, that is a tried and true reliable. Oh, like in FY22, that is gonna, oh, like actually increased by $166,000. Other D-decsize estimates, you'll see, actually up above that the 60% to share, we're planning on 2.5, we're increasing that actually by $200,000 as well. Oh, but the total 100% of that, that we're planning on is 4,166,000, I believe, $666,000, I mean, 66 cents. Like, so like we are increasing that as well, but that is, again, I mean, it's hovering right around where the average has been. Like over the last five years, and I know there's been a lot of talk about D-decsize being high. However, if you look at a five-year historic. Oh, like actually, you look, the average of that is only 2.5 million dollars. So I think we might be pushing it there, but we need to survive as well. Hold on a sec, I'm just gonna mute that. So in terms of the interests, yeah, dedicated deeds, that is the payment that we get. Oh, like that we're allowed to hold back every year to deal with the unfunded pension, oh, like the unfunded pension liability. Oh, I can actually, oh, I can actually, after this year, one of the very good things is the interest we own that will be paid off. So there'll be about half a million dollars we'll be able to use for the next five to six years to really fund this. Actually, one-time revenue as well, because it's only gonna happen for five to six years. But what we envision that being is really helpful to our capital budget, like beginning next year. So in the next line, you can see what we were talking about earlier. Like with the county share and internet revenue. And over the last three or four years, that has really decreased by half. Oh, like in dealing with a county mandate on the school and the, oh, and at the registry, where we need to, and we're required by law to, oh, like actually increase our maintenance of effort really by $100,000 each year. You can see how when there's a drastic shift in the revenues, oh, like it actually causes a really big challenge in a volatile revenue stream anyways. Parking revenues, we, actually, last year, we were very excited about the parking revenues we were seeing. Like actually, like in this, actually at Quincy District Court because of the restaurant scene there. However, about actually two months after we had projected that out, basically, the world went to pot in a pandemic. So like we're bringing that back down to, like, I think a much more realistic, you know, like post-COVID, dealing with COVID realm. Oh, the reimbursement and shared services income, that's gonna be level funded. Oh, like those are right where we're gonna come in, those are based on tried and true numbers. So unfortunately, going into FY22, we are planning to continue, at least right now, the structural deficit and using our carryover. Oh, like from FY21 of half a million dollars, which we don't like, but oh, like it's still an outstanding issue there. Oh, but one of the really good things, as you can see in the next line, is we have actually decreased our alliance from using, oh, like another one-time revenue stream of $130,000. Actually, coming from the prior years D-decsize. And I really wanted to just really lay the framework for the rest of the budget process. We have talked about a deficit. Oh, in terms of the $300,000, and I think that is becoming more real by the day. Oh, like, so like that is really going to, oh, in my opinion, inform what we're gonna be able to do and not able to do in the next few months here. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to talk about them. But I just wanted to provide that overview.
I have a question.
Okay.
Through, through you, Joe. Mike, one of the things that you brought up, and it was one of the things that Commissioner Shea brought up, what Dr. Childs had brought up, I believe Joe Reardon brought it up too. And we talked about it at the end of the registry sequence. So it doesn't make any sense to me why the county internet revenues will be going down, because if anything, they should be going up, we're using it more and more. So maybe we can get something in writing from the register as to, as to why. I think that's important, it doesn't make sense to me. I'm not sure if the registry, register is still on, but maybe we can get something for the next meeting and writing, that'd be great. But I don't have any more questions. And Mike, you did a great presentation, nice job.
Mike, does everyone have a sheet? I have one, do the commissioners and, and, and Chairman Reddins, Chairman Connors' group have this, this list?
I have one.
Paul's got one?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, we, we have it, Joe.
How about the original, the earlier document you flashed up there and we didn't finish with?
I'll go back to that.
Let me see that again.
All right, hold on one second.
It looks new to me, and I do read everything, I don't know whether I absorb it, but I do read everything.
Hold on. Hold on. This one right here, Joe?
Yes. Did you say? Do we all have that?
No, I don't have that.
I don't, I don't either, Dick.
So we talked about this, this was from the last meeting on the 27th of January.
Okay, if it was in our packet there, I have it, but it doesn't, I never, I never saw that format with the red line on the top. That's all right. I was, I was at the 27th, it was the following week I missed. I'll go look for it, if not, send it, send the commissioners another one. Does, does Chairman Connors have that?
I'll have to go look at that.
Send Chairman Connors one too, and then he can distribute it to his people if he wants.
So, yes, what I.
I'm not saying I didn't get it, though, it looked, it looked new to me, though.
So, yeah, like I'll follow up with everyone, like in for the record also, like we've already been like updating our budget portal on our website as well. Like in all this information is there, like along with the revenues, the schedule and all that stuff, like for everyone here and for the public.
That's a good point. Okay, any questions, Mike? Okay, we're gonna move on.
Joe, before you do that, you wanted to take A, B, C, and D under advisement.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to take the, the three department budgets that we reviewed today under advisement for further action, future action.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're, we're, we're officially into a, we'll have to put our budget shirts on. But this was productive, it's meaningful.
Can Dr. Childs stay on for the Abrahams group? Is the finance committee gonna stay on?
I am.
Okay, terrific.
If the members, yeah, if the members can, we could stay on through that. I think that's important for us to hear, and then we can adjourn, because I know Beth will be breathing. We can adjourn following that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Let me ask you this, is, is Michelle Labadini on?
Yes, she doesn't have volume, though, because I took her, I took her camera.
I'm on, can you hear?
Oh, there we go.
I want to take this, I want to, I want to take this minute since you, some of you know Michelle, and hopefully you'll get to know her better. There's, there's a letter, if it didn't go out today, it's going out tomorrow, announcing all of the recent changes put in place by Mike fleeing us and going to the town of, I even forget the name of the town.
Dayton.
Dayton. And last week, the commissioners, after a lot of discussion and trying to hold the ship together here, appointed Michelle Labadini as acting director until a new director is qualified. We hired an outside firm that is searching for a director. If any of you have any requests, or any ideas about it, we're still taking them, but they're gonna be referred to the outside firm. There were two able firms that responded to our request for proposals. Either could have done it, but we all felt that the firm we picked is the one for the job. Michelle has been with us, I don't want in two and a half years. She is the director of personnel, for lack of a better name. She and Assistant Director Buckley are working very closely. But Michelle is gonna be so fortunate is that she is carrying forward this budget for us. So you're gonna be seeing a lot of Michelle. And I just want to introduce her, but all that is coming out in the letter to everyone. I believe you'll get it before Monday or Tuesday. But I looked at it, and I think it went out yesterday, but I don't want to pressure Mike.
Yes, it went out yesterday afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good work. Other than that, let's move to the final two items, which are update on the Abrams group and then any other items that you, anyone has, and then we're gonna adjourn. Director Mullin, update on Abrams group.
So, yes, I'm, I'll be very brief, and then I can turn it over to Dr. Childs also. But we've been working feverishly with the Abrahams group. So we have a bunch of things that we're working on. So a bunch of benchmarking work, a bunch of like staffing and operational analyses efforts as well. So like I'm very happy to report, and I did, because I do understand the time commitment of the FinCom members. Oh, but I did email out, like, and everyone has agreed to join us next week as well.
One of the Colombian pages.
Oh, and Mark Abrahams, who's the principal of the, he will be joining us. Oh, and he will be giving us all an update about where things are. We do have like new parts of the project that will be rolling out. Oh, like, and that Mark is gonna like share with us where we are, where we're going, and hopefully how this all wraps into the big picture here. So stay tuned for next week. He's joining us at about 1:10 in the afternoon on Wednesday, the third. So like, and Dr. Childs, I'm not sure if you have anything to add as well.
Yeah, that's, not, not too much, I think you did great, Mike. I just, I think they've done a great job, and they're very responsive, who's suggestions to make it, to make things go well. I think, I think everybody's gonna love talking to Mark, he's obviously doing some stuff. I mean, I think there's several things that we did recently. One, they, they added contextual data to the, to the benchmarking data, benchmarking analysis, that was awesome. You saw the revenue data, and I think we're really, you know, really making an effort to make sure we get that five-year timeline, so we have a much better process to understand our revenues that are a consistent thing to hang our hats on, so we can trust them and use reasonable estimates going forward. The, they're busy now with the JAQs getting information from all the employees in the county, and that's really direct anonymous information that they will get that will help sort out, you know, how things work operationally. So I, I think, and then they're working on the regional services analysis as well. And that's an opportunity to really link the county more tightly with the cities and towns in the county. So there's just a lot of good work going on, and I think it'll be great for us to have a good, long conversation with them next week.
I have a comment, at last week's update meeting with the Abrams group. I've kind of, I'm, you know, I'm 1,000% fired, and we're in, and I don't know if we're halfway there, but we're hoping to have it done by the end of budget season. I haven't over, over, over managed them, I've been an overburdened, but that was by design. I'm very impressed, I will tell you, there's a huge imprint from them, I think is gonna be. The agricultural school is a big issue here, and the person they have assigned to it is a, a former longtime professional business manager from schools and other school departments and everything. And this seems to be a very good and, and fruitful relationship. Dr. Tammy Quinn and Rick are bearing this all, and, you know, it, of course, it revolves around dollars, which is what we are, and 90% of this involves around, so it's, I was, it was, I was very impressed with them. We can talk again next week, so, so far, we feel we're, it was a bold step, but we did it, and we also feel that we're getting our money's worth without question. These people are good, that's all. Anyone else on Abrams group? Mike?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, with, with that being done, may the finance committee actually get a motion to adjourn. Obviously, anyone's welcome to stay for the rest of the commissioners' meeting, but I know people have other commitments, would that be okay?
Absolutely.
I don't know why.
Done yeoman work, we're just getting warmed up.
Well, it's good, it's good to be along through the whole process.
You're very helpful.
Mr. Connors? Oh, I got both. All right, Carl, I heard you first, Paul, that means you have a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. Going through, Carl?
Aye.
Aye.
Beth? Paul?
Aye.
Before I go, I just would like to thank Mr. Connors for the appointment from Wellesley. Not only is this a person who knows budgets, but it provides us with some gender balance, which I appreciate. So I look forward to working with her and with the team and with the commissioners as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate it, we couldn't, we couldn't do it without you.
A big task.
Okay, this portion of the joint meeting for budget review purposes is over. Commissioners, stay on, we have one or two items, thank you.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Number 12, any other items the chair did not reasonably anticipate? Commissioners, do you have anything else you want to talk about?
Yeah.
Yes, sure. Mike, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman, no, I don't believe.
Okay, Commissioner Collins?
All set.
Commissioner Stady?
All set, Mr. Jim.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
2:55 PM, all in favor, aye. Thank you very much, this meeting is over.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.